As we go throughout our, our, part of our meeting, as we go out there throughout our program this evening, stationed in other parts of our building. This evening, San Angelo ISD is complying with the district's directive of ten or less individuals gathered in one room. So we're still accepting members of the public to attend this meeting and make a public comment if they would like to do so. We have a satellite seating area and viewing downstairs to adhere to, to our state and federal policies. Welcome to our regular meeting of the Board of Districts, Board of Trustees of the San Angelo and Penne School District. We're also live streaming this session on Facebook as well as our TV channel to help us adhere to and avoid gatherings of more than ten people. Again, based on those guidelines. So, welcome to our meeting this evening. It's unusual times require unusual steps and we're all going to be interesting to see how our meeting goes this evening, but we're excited to be here and, and celebrate what's going on in SEISD. Our first item is to call our meeting to order and establish a quorum. We do have a quorum of our board team. We're kind of spread out, but the only board member not here is Mr. Hernandez, who had something come up late and he's in transit to San Antonio. Our second item on our agenda is our invocation. Normally we have a pastor or someone here to lead us in our invocation. I'll choose to do that. If everyone would like to pray, we'll do that. So, let's pray. Heavenly Father, we're thankful for the opportunity that you give us to be here this evening. We're thankful for the blessings that you provide for us and our families each day, Father. We pray that in these unusual times, Father, that you would give peace and comfort to all those who might have anxiety and worry, Father. We pray that you would be with us here this evening, that we would make decisions that would be best for the students, the staff, and all those who are working so hard at SEISD, Father. We're so thankful for the fact that we've been able to serve meals and, and do things for, for the students and, and of our school district this last week. And we certainly are thankful for janitors and, and maintenance staff and, and people, certainly our, our cafeteria workers for being able to step up and do those things that really take care of our students during this time of need, Father. Help us this evening to be guided by your wisdom as we make decisions that are best for the students of our district and, and really the stakeholders of our community, Father. Again, we thank you for the blessings that you provide for us each day and we know that you're in charge, Father, and we hope that we'll lean on you during these times. We pray in Christ's name. Amen. And I'll lead us in our pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state under God, one indivisible.
It's much better when we have students here. That takes care of items one, two, and three. I'm really looking forward to this part of our meeting. We're going to move forward to item four, which is our recognitions and I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Gomez. So Farah Gomez is going to help us with our recognitions.
Good evening, Mr. Lehman, Dr. Detloff, and members of the board. This evening we have several recognitions and our sponsors have joined in with us remotely through Zoom, as you can see on our screen. We will have each sponsor highlight their groups and they have a presentation to show as well for their individual programs and their parents and athletes and musicians are able to join on Facebook Live to see the recognition. So to begin our recognitions for this evening, we begin with our Central High School Cheerleaders and their coach, Matt Esqu.
Okay, am I unmuted? Alright, so this year was a great year for cheerleaders at Central High School. They were the UIL State runner-up in 6A Division One and then they went on two weeks later and won their fifth national title with NCA. So our cheerleaders for, that competed on this team were, Ray Goan. Okay, so starting with our seniors, first off is Isis Camarillo, then Ruthie Randall, and then Carly Wallace. Next up would be our juniors. We have Hannah Gomez, Delaney Grimes, Madison Jackson, Courtney Love, Emily Sanchez, Haley Smith, Hannah Still, Rayleigh Torres, and then with our sophomores, we had Jada Carter, Sydney Edgar, Jill Gersh, Ally Hamby, Kindus Leach, Kaitlin Migrants, Adara Robles, Jaden Sawyer, Lila Turner, Haley Wardlong, and then starting our freshman group, we had Ella Burns, Kylie Fuchs, Ainsley Harper, Kylie McCowsky, Avery Ochoa, Kaylee Roder, Mariah Tibbs, and Cameron Torres.
Sorry, I was going to get in trouble with Jack. My apologies, Jack. Next up, we have our music programs from both Central High School and Lakeview High School. We'll begin with band with our head director from Central High School, Jason Jones.
Okay, can you hear me? Okay, good evening, everyone, and I'm very excited to be here and to be able to share a little bit about the Monty Bobcat Band Program. It's been a great first year for me and, and being here and enjoying being a part of this community and being a part of this district. It's been a fantastic district, so thank you to all you guys do. We'll go ahead and get started recognizing our students. But first, without that, I'd like to, we go ahead and go to the screen now. I want to say what an amazing group of band director staff that I have. We couldn't do what we do without this amazing group of band directors. I want to just take a quick second to recognize them. Our associate directors, Mike Berry, Stephanie Dearborn, and Kristen Ellis, and our percussion director, Caleb Leonard, and our color guard director, Rebecca Henry. They do a fantastic job helping run this program and it was a well-oiled machine when I got here, so it was really nice to step in and, and work with them. But overall, this year, we've had a really great year. Just to kind of highlight some of the successes we've had, our marching season, and you go to the next screen. Our marching season, we were, we won the Outstanding 5A, 6A Band at the Big Country Marching Festival in Abilene. We had a First Division at our UIL Region Marching Contest. The kids were doing a fantastic job prepping for UIL, which will not happen now. But they were all, doing, all the bands were doing great and it was, it was really fun to see them progressing over the course of the semester. And then both of our, our indoor color guard and indoor percussion, both had one contest they went to and both of the varsity groups won first place at that contest they went to. So it was really great. And you can go to the next slide. And there's just a couple of pictures of some of our groups, including our jazz band and all of them, they've just done a fantastic job during the course of the year. Just to kind of give you an outline of how our individual competition season works, once you finish marching season, we go into our TMEA All-Region Band Process and the Solo and Ensemble Process. The Region Band Process, students begin working on their, their music in the fall and then once marching season's over, we go and compete against schools from Abilene and Wichita Falls, Midland, Odessa in a big, you know, chair test competition. So we had quite a few groups, kids that did super at this. We had five students that qualified for the All-Region Jazz Band. We had ten students that qualified for the Freshman All-Region Band. We had fifteen students that qualified for one of the tenth through twelfth grade region bands and then we had fourteen students that qualified for area and auditioned for the All-State Band. Five of those were in jazz and nine of those were in Concert Band. And then also the other thing we can do is solo an ensemble. The students begin working on their ensembles in, in the late fall and they compete for a rating. We had seventy-four First Division medals, thirty-one solos, forty-three ensembles, and then we had forty-three students that qualified for the UIL State Solo and Ensemble Contest. Did a fabulous job. So now I want to recognize all those students that have been advancing post-district. First, from Region Jazz, had Preston Llewellyn on trumpet, Isaiah Alejandro on trumpet, Ethan Clark on alto saxophone, Natasha Flores Acton on trumpet, and Willow Joyce on trumpet. Next, we move to our Concert Band. We had Natasha Flores Acton on trumpet, Skylar Rodriguez on flute, Lauren Ochoa on clarinet, Willow Joyce on trumpet, Emily Parks on oboe, Caitlin Wallace on clarinet, Preston Llewellyn on trumpet, Tommy Young on trumpet, and then Kayden Hale on baritone. Now I'll recognize those kids that advanced to the State Solo and Ensemble Contest. The qualification requirements for this is you have to play a solo from the hardest list of difficulty music, have to earn a First Division at the region level. In addition, solos have to be memorized. So all these that earned it on a solo, they memorized it. So on solos, we have Scott Rodriguez on piccolo, Kayden Hale playing a trombone and a baritone solo both. He made First Divisions and advanced to state on both. Ryan Chavaria on percussion, Caleb Perkey on percussion, and Garrett Glover on piano. Next, we'll go into our ensembles. We have a flute trio of Autumn Brewer, Mallory DeWitt, and Gabriel Gutierrez. Another flute trio of Annika Corrio, Laura Johnson, and Emily Rondin. We had a clarinet quartet of Carly Karan, Dallas Dotson, Mia Flores, and Caitlin Wallace. Another clarinet quartet, Logan Brockman, Melinda Hogan, Lauren Ochoa, and Olivia Ringo. Saxophone quartet of Frankie Coleman, Sean Estrada, Chariah Hill, and Carlos Pena. And we had a flute ensemble of Olivia Allen, Emily Berry, Billy Cortez, Mallory DeWitt, Gabriel Gutierrez, Scott Rodriguez, and Mackenzie Smith. We had a saxophone trio of Ethan Clark, Megan Combs, and Michaela Nguyen. Trumpet quartet of Isaiah Alejandro, Bryce Cummings, Adrian Hernandez, and Preston Llewellyn. Another trumpet quartet of Isaiah Alejandro, Natasha Flores Acton, Adrian Hernandez, and Tommy Young. And then a trombone quartet of Ty Espinal, Michael Estrada, Ashton Hennes, and Joseph Rubio. And last, we had a baritone trio of Brock Packard, Rudy Perez, and Jordan Trigg. And I just want to thank you for all you do to support the Monty Bobcat Band and all the music programs in San Angelo ISD.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. And now we have Lakeview High School with our head director, Josh Bailey.
Hello, San Angelo ISD. I'm Josh Bailey. Like you said, the band director over here at Lakeview High School. Want to say that I'm really enjoying my first year getting to work here for such an awesome school district and working with some really awesome kids over here on the north side of town. We have a great staff over here at Lakeview at the high school with myself and Jesse Bailey and then our middle school staff, Sarah Clark and Kyle Headstream help us a lot over here as well. Please excuse my sunburnt face. We've been passing out instruments all day long to some students over here. We just finished up and then now I get to be in this awesome board meeting and get to talk about our year. So, Mr. Jones already explained how the year works kind of in band and so we'll talk through what we did over here. So the first slide is a picture of our group right after we got sweepstakes at the UIL Marching Contest. We got our, our First Division. It was a great year, had an awesome show and kids worked really hard for it. And then the next slide, our honor band actually got to go to UIL Concert and Sight Reading this year. We go to the early contest, get it out of the way because the kids get so busy and wrapped up in so many different activities. So we get that done and out of the way. So we did get First Division on stage and in sight reading, so it gives us a sweepstakes for the year. Kids were really proud of getting, accomplishing that. And then our next slide, that's a picture of our indoor percussion group. This is the first year we've done the marching percussion where we actually move around on the gym floor instead of just standing still. We did an eighties show, as you can tell from the pictures there and the really cool uniforms that we got for the kids. They really enjoyed that show and we got to go to one contest where we did get second place to a big 5A school. So that was pretty exciting for our, our group. We also have indoor color guard and they went as well. I didn't have any pictures of them. And then if you go to the next slide, we want to feature our three students who advanced to State Solo and Ensemble. This is a French horn trio. We have our drum major Madison Getz, she's a junior. And then we have Gillian Haynes, she's a junior. And then we have our senior Miguel Diaz. And then this next slide is a photo of our sixteen students who qualified for the Region Band through the audition process. And then the next slide has all the students who advanced past the region level. So they made it to the area level. So we had our drum major Vanessa Longoria on flute, advanced, and then Nellie Woodruff on bassoon, Andrew Mutka on bass clarinet, Madison Getz on French horn, Marisol Vazquez on euphonium, Gavin Davis on tuba, and Noah Rochester on string bass. Those were our advancing students. And then beyond area, you, there's one more level you can advance to. It's kind of the highest honor in band is to make the All-State Band. And this year, we actually had two students qualify for the All-State Band. So you can see pictured there is the 4A All-State Band down in San Antonio. They got to go and perform a concert with some of the best musicians in the state and they had a really great time. We're really proud of those students. They represented our school well. So this next slide shows those students. We had Noah Rochester made All-State on the string bass. Noah is an awesome student. He plays just about any instrument that I give him. Awesome kid and he just got into West Texas A&amp;M University's Music School and that's where he plans to attend school. And then the next slide, we have Andrew Mutka. He made the All-State Band. He's a bass clarinet. And he's a senior this well, this year as well and he's going to be going to Baylor University. So once again, I do want to thank everyone who helped our school this year and supported our band program, especially our band boosters that are out there. I hope that y'all are watching and thank you so much to our school board for, for supporting our students.
Next, we'll move to choir. We first have Central High School, Landon Gilmore.
Good evening and thank you for this opportunity to speak to you. Thank you administrators and board members for your leadership during this time. It's certainly a new experience for all of us and we're thankful for everything that you're doing to still provide these learning opportunities for our students. Our choirs program, since the last time we saw the board, we competed in Concert and Sight Reading evaluations last April. We took four groups, approximately two hundred students. Three of our groups were fortunate enough to receive sweepstakes ratings, the Concert Ladies, Bella Voce, and Bobcat Corral, our varsity mixed choir. We also took a JV Men's Choir, which is a little unusual, but they got, they were the only group actually. They got straight ones in the concerts competition from our school and they came out with an excellent sight reading. And so we're proud of all those groups and we've got some pictures of them for you in the slideshow, our Men's Choir. If you can go to the next slide. Concert Ladies Group, that's directed by Mrs. Vaught. Our Bella Voce Group, also directed by Mrs. Vaught, and then the Bobcat Corral that we co-direct. This fall, so our All-State Choir Audition Process rolls from May first through February fifteenth or so, when we have the TMEA convention. This music's announced in May and students start working on that music. They go to All-State camps in the summer. This year, we had sixteen students named to an All-Region Choir. Those auditions occurred in October. And then we had three students advance to the next round in November with one student advancing onto the area auditions in January. And then the, from the area auditions, we had a student Elijah Jackson, who was a sophomore, who was selected as an All-State member for the Tenor Bass Choir. And we also found out that when he got down there, he was selected as a soloist. So that was a really cool opportunity. We have some pictures over the next several slides of some of the students, students in that process. Students attending a workshop at Abilene Christian University. The students at the region auditions at Permian High School. And then a selection of students that performed in the All-Region Mixed Choir and Treble Choir Concerts that took place the first weekend in November at Permian High School. And then the last slide of that bunch is a picture of our sophomore Elijah Jackson, again, who made the All-State Men's Choir, Tenor Bass Choir, and was selected as a soloist. We were super glad that Ms. Hubner was able to come down and represent our SEISD administration and she got to see that concert and that was really fun for all of us and for him. He did an awesome job. The choir sang Amazing Grace and he sang the solo at the beginning of it and at the end of it with a choir of about two hundred guys behind him. So that's a extremely high honor and we're proud of him. This past spring, well, this, well, the spring that we're in, I should say, in February, we had a Regional Solo and Ensemble Contest. We took about sixty students who competed. Thirty-seven of those students were awarded the highest rating possible, a superior rating. Twenty-nine of the thirty-seven students performed a hard, the hardest difficulty of solo, so that's a class one and they of course memorized that. All vocal solos have to be memorized. And so twenty-nine of that thirty-seven are qualifying for the state contest that we hope is still happening in June. That's typically held at the UT Austin campus, but that's to be determined this year. The next slide is a picture of our group that went to that contest last year. So they, they was very nice dressed up for that. So our next batch of slides are our individual student recognitions and I'll just kind of go through these. Caroline Anderson was All-Region Treble Choir, First Division on a UIL solo and State UIL Contest Qualifier. Tyler Bridges, a ninth grader, he earned fifth chair as a bass in the All-Region Choir Auditions for the Tenor Bass Group. He received a First Division on his solo and qualified for state contests. Lily Bright was Alto I All-Region Treble Choir Alternate, First Division on a solo and State UIL Qualifier. Edith Castaneda, Alto I All-Region Treble Choir Member. Aleah Collins is a ninth grader. She earned seventh chair as a soprano I on the All-Region Middle School Treble Choir. Anaya Dixon, Alto II All-Region Treble Choir Member. Drew Eisenbach, one of our seniors, who's also a Texan member. She Alto, she was an Alto I, earned a spot in the All-Region Treble Choir. She got a First Division on her solo and is also qualified for State UIL Contest. Camille Fod is one of our sweet seniors that we share with orchestra and she got a First Division on her vocal solo and is qualified for State UIL Contest. Christian Fleming, First Division UIL Vocal Solo and State UIL Qualifier. Jason Fowler, First Division Solo and State Qualifier. Brooklyn Garza, First Division Solo and State Qualifier. Andres Gonzalez earned fifteenth chair as bass I in the All-Region Mixed Choir and he was First Division Vocal Soloist and State UIL Contest Qualifier. Jasmine Gutierrez auditioned for the All-Region Treble Choir in Alto II and was named an alternate. Bethany Hare, ninth grader, is a First Division on her vocal solo. Michaela Hare, her older sister, is a senior. She's a soprano I, was All-Region Treble Choir Member, earned a First Division on her UIL solo and has qualified for state competition. Paige Harris is a senior. This student competed on a vocal solo and a piano solo at regional competition. She earned First Division on both of those and has qualified for state for both solos. Haley Hawkins, First Division Vocal Solo and State Contest Qualifier. Brooklyn Holman, First Division UIL Solo. Andrea Isaacs is a ninth grader who got a fifth chair on soprano I in All-Region Treble Choir, First Division Solo Contest. There's Elijah Jackson again. He had, was, he earned first chair, Tenor I, in the region auditions. He placed second in the pre-area auditions, that's the second round, and fourth chair at the area auditions. So he was a member of the All-State Tenor Bass Choir. He earned a First Division on his vocal solo and is qualified for State UIL in June. Taylor Joost, First Division UIL Vocal Solo. She's a ninth grader. Bailey Jowers, First Division UIL Solo and State UIL Qualifier. Carlos Luna is one of our senior football players. He earned a First Division on his vocal solo and State UIL Qualifier. Riley Matthews, First Division Vocal Solo. Cambry Morales, First Division Vocal Solo. Kayden Martinez, First Division Vocal Solo and State Qualifier. Jack McLaughlin, First Division Vocal Solo and State Qualifier as a ninth grader. Brayden Myers, First Division Vocal Solo and State Contest Qualifier. Breannon Moss, First Division Vocal Solo and State Qualifier. Mary Nor, excuse me, Mary Norris, First Division on her vocal solo. Luke Oliver earned a First Division on his vocal solo and is qualified for state. Hannah Olson, both First Division on vocal solo and State UIL Qualifier. Micah Reynolds, First Division Vocal Solo and State UIL Qualifier. Dirk Ross, this is the first time he actually auditioned for Region Choir and he earned thirteenth chair, bass I. We're really proud of him. Hayden Shelton is a transfer student and wonderful vocalist. He earned a First Division on his vocal solo and is qualified for state. He moved here right after Christmas break. He's done a wonderful job. Skylar Smith, First Division Vocal Solo and State UIL Contest Qualifier, also one of those students we share with Ms. Rocha. Ashley Stat, First Division Vocal Solo and State UIL Qualifier. Sydney Sale, same thing, First Division on her vocal and State UIL Qualifier. Abigail Stevens received a one on her solo. Our senior Andy Thompson, Choir President, she's ninth chair, soprano I All-Region Mixed Choir. She qualified for the pre-region, excuse me, pre-area auditions. She got a First Division on her solo and is also qualified for state. Gloria Trevino, third chair soprano II, All-Region Mixed Choir. She was a qualifier, an auditioner for pre-area. She got a one on her first, excuse me, First Division on her solo and State UIL Qualifier. And then lastly, Elizabeth Weinman was an All-Region Treble Choir soprano I. So that's all of our choir students. Thank you so much.
Next, we have Lakeview High School, Amy Greider.
Hello there. I'm Amy Greider. I'm the choir director at Lakeview High School and Lincoln Middle School. I've got two students to really showcase today. We have Rebecca Heroy, who advanced to area auditions as an alto in the Region Choir Process. And she also scored a Division One on the hardest difficulty of a solo at Solo and Ensemble Competition and will be advancing to the Texas State Solo and Ensemble Contest. And she also scored a division I on the hardest difficulty of a solo at solo and ensemble competition and will be advancing to the Texas State Solo and Ensemble Competition in June. And then we also have Shay Price, who competed in solo and ensemble with a, received a division I on the hardest difficulty solo and will also advance on to the Texas State Solo and Ensemble Competition in June.
And now, Mr. Rosendo Ramos for mariachi at Lakeview High School.
Good evening, school board. Thank you for having us tonight. And I'm really, really proud of the mariachi this, this year. We've done a lot of great things. First, before we even start up, I want to give a shout out to Mr. Bailey. We did an awesome little joint venture this past football season where we performed together in the stadium and it was a really amazing experience for all the kids. And it was really cool to see that unity between us. The mariachi advanced to the state contest this year for the fourth year in a row. Very, very proud of the performance that they, they, they did. They represented San Angelo and Lakeview very well. And I'm very, very proud of all the students that, that went out there and did what they had to do. I do want to, if you want to go to the next slide, I want to mention all my students that performed there. On the top row, we have my apologies. Let's see if I can see here. There's a lot of slides in here, I'm sorry. Okay, here we go. On the top row, we have Fabien Arredia, Belen Hernandez, Demetrio Rios, Jose Saucedo, and Deja Gomez. In the middle row, you have myself, Rosendo Ramos, my assistant, Ezra Ramirez, Daisy Conno, Sandra Salas, Adrian Mascoro, Álvaro Ramos, Joe Santillán, Jackie Ortiz. On the bottom row, we have Isamari Cisneros, Analia Zamaron, Michaela Torres, Alexandria Flores, Alani Jimenez, Amy Torres, Vanessa Ramos, and Monica Escandón. Very, very proud of these students and thank you guys for all the support always.
Next, we have orchestra, Mrs. Emily Hallrocha from Central High School.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Mrs. Rocha from Central High School and CFC. And my assistant is Michael Martin, wonderful, wonderful teacher. Thank you so much for all you do, especially during this difficult time. Thank you for keeping us all in good hopes and thank you so much for finding a way to recognize these kids, even though we can't actually be there. This is my favorite night of the year because this is one of the times that we actually get to recognize our students outside of our programs for the hard work that they do. I do want to tell you guys about a couple of things that we've done this year as an entire orchestra program, but then I want to focus on the kids who have been doing all the hard work. So we, we had more students make all-region this year than, than before. We had more kids qualify for state solo and ensemble as well. And we, just the week before spring break, we achieved our 36th consecutive year of sweepstakes. And we are very, very proud of our kiddos. All of that can't happen without our students. And cannot happen without them working hard. And as you can see, you're, you're going to see a lot of really, really great kids tonight. And you're going to find out that there are actually some wonderful future educators coming from our program. So if you would like to go ahead and go to our first students. This is Erica Eichenberry. She earned a division I at solo and ensemble. Next slide. This is Alexis Cooper, also a division I at solo and ensemble. Alyssa Vega earned a division I at solo and ensemble. Ben Crowley earned a division I at solo and ensemble. Braylon Netto earned a division I at solo and ensemble. Corti Vene, or also known as Coco, earned a division I at solo and ensemble. Amber Byrd earned a division I at solo and ensemble. Erin Lebrasser earned a division I at solo and ensemble. Hannah Torres earned a division I at solo and ensemble. Jayden Gonzal, also, Gonzalez also earned a division I at solo and ensemble. As did Jocelyn Abila. Jun Jong earned a division I at solo and ensemble. As did Joy Jong. Laura Bean earned a division I at solo and ensemble. Marbella Valdez earned a division I at solo and ensemble. Patrick Fuentes earned a division I at solo and ensemble. Rebecca Jacobson earned a division I at solo and ensemble. Rosie Karanko earned a division I at solo and ensemble. Stephanie Espinosa also earned a division I. Tanya Tai earned a division I. Now, we move on to something a little different. Jacob Garrett, he's a senior. He was accepted into the all-region orchestra and he plans to major in music education. Madison Carr earned her way into the all-region orchestra and she actually placed first in the Philharmonic Orchestra. Trenton Welch is a freshman who was, who earned his way into the all-region orchestra. Anastasia Bradham earned a division I at solo and ensemble and earned her, her way to the Texas State Solo and Ensemble Competition. Bella Castilleja also earned her way to the Texas State Solo and Ensemble with a, earning a division I. Ella Faber did that as well. She's an, so, um, state qualifier. Levi Brody as well. He's a freshman and he earned his way. Logan Lido, a bassist, earned his way to state solo and ensemble. Skylar Smith, another one that we share with choir, earned her way to state solo and ensemble on both, in both orchestra and choir. Camille Fod is another one that we share with choir. She was in the all-region orchestra and she is going to state on, with both violin and in choir. Francesca Antalan is a freshman. She earned a division I at solo and ensemble. She's a Texas State Solo and Ensemble qualifier. She earned her way into the all-region orchestra and in this last summer, she performed in Carnegie Hall as part of the Honors Performance Series. Gabby Stobach is a, was a division I, earned a division I at solo and ensemble. She qualified for state solo and ensemble and she was a member of the all-region orchestra. Harmony Schultz also is going to state solo and ensemble and made the all-region orchestra. Talison Carter is a senior. She is a Texas State Solo and Ensemble qualifier. She plans to major in music education. She's been accepted to ASU and earned the Performing Arts Scholarship. But I also thought it was important to, to mention that she has over 50 service hours within our orchestra program this year. So she is, she's going to be an outstanding educator. Arabella Dunlap is a freshman. She is a Texas State Solo and Ensemble qualifier. She made the all-region orchestra. And she also performed in Carnegie Hall this last summer as part of the Honors Performance Series. Dallas Dotson, you'll see that he has two instruments in his hands. We shared him with band. He qualified for state solo and ensemble on violin and I, and I want to say he also did the same in, in band. He made the all-region orchestra and in February, he performed in Carnegie Hall as part of the Honors Performance Series on violin. Dylan Stobach is a senior. He's a state solo and ensemble qualifier. He made the all-region orchestra. He performed in Carnegie Hall in February and he plans to major in music education. He's going to ASU and he earned the Performing Arts Scholarship. Jacob Brody, junior bassist. He qualified for state solo and ensemble. He's an all-region orchestra member. And he, this last summer, he performed in Sydney, Australia as part of the Honors Performance Series. And I just want to mention that he placed first, which is a really big deal. He put us on the map for sure. Kira Porus is, she's a, she's a junior, but she's, she'll be graduating this year. She's a state solo and ensemble qualifier. She was a member of the all-region orchestra. She performed in Carnegie Hall in February as part of this Honors Performance Series. And she plans to major in music therapy at ASU. Max Cook is a sophomore. You might have seen him. He, he does a lot of fiddle around San Angelo. But he, he qualified for state solo and ensemble. He was a member of the all-region orchestra. And I want to mention that he was accepted to play both at Carnegie Hall and in Vienna, Austria for the Honors Performance Series. He chose Vienna, which would be this summer, and I hope he gets to go. This is Greg Fod. He is a freshman. And Greg is very special because he made our top orchestra on both violin and bass. He also made a division I at solo and ensemble on both violin and bass. He's a qualifier for state on bass and he made the all-region orchestra on both violin and bass. Stellar kiddo. This is Jonathan Dianda. He's a senior violinist. He made a division I at solo and ensemble. He qualified for state solo and ensemble. He was an all-region orchestra member. He was part of the Honors Performance Series. He also performed in Sydney, Australia. He is a recipient of the TMEA, Texas Music Educators Association Scholarship. He, he, he qualified for area and recorded for state. And he plans to major in music education, to double major with music education as one of his areas. He will be going to Texas Tech and he, as I said, he's the recipient of the TMEA Music Education Scholarship. And last but not least, we have Lucas Morelos. He earned a division I at solo and ensemble. Texas, he, he is a state solo qualifier. He was an all-region member and I should say this is the second year that he placed first in our region. He was part of the Honors Performance Series where he performed in Carnegie Hall in February. He was part of the TMEA area orchestra and he was actually the only student from our region to advance to the second round of judging. And he placed 46th in the state. And that, that is a really big deal in the orchestra world. So we're, we're very, very proud of him. He also plans to major in music education. He will be going to ASU and he's a recipient of the Performing Arts Scholarship. Thank you so much for all of your support.
Next up, we have Ms. Stephanie Infante, Lakeview High School Orchestra.
Hi, my name is Stephanie Infante and I am the Lakeview and Lincoln Orchestra Director and this is my first year and it's been a very exciting year. I've had so much fun working with these kids and I appreciate all of your support. And I do share some kids with Rosendo and Josh. And so I'm very proud for those kids to be able, to be involved in all of our programs. I took about 14 kids to solo and ensemble for the first time in the last past years. Lakeview hasn't participated. And I'm incredibly proud of these kiddos. And we had a couple violin trios that received a, a rating of a one. And then I had two soloists, two violin soloists that received a rating of a one and one of them is Noah Rochester. He started out playing violin with Mr. Ramos and Mariachi at Lincoln and then he moved into the percussion section. And last year, he played bass for orchestra and this year, he's playing cello for me. So he's very well-rounded and I'm incredibly proud of him. He is actually going to be majoring and, as a double bass major at West Texas A&amp;M. And I'm super proud of what he's done and everything that Lakeview has offered him. And there's also another senior, Issa Mory Cisneros. She is someone that I share with Rosendo as well. And she's been a mariachi student since she was in sixth grade. And this year, I had the opportunity and blessing to work with Rosendo and his high school students. And I was able to help her with her college auditions as well. And she took her solo to solo and ensemble and she received a rating of a one as well. She's going to be studying music therapy at Sam Houston University. And some of my other kiddos, my concert master, Gretchen Bundick was a part of a string quartet that received a one and I'm incredibly proud of that. Her second violin was Serena Martinez. Their viola was Alan Salazar and their cellist was Noah Rochester. The violin trio is Gabby Flores and Skyluera and Gabby Flores, Skyluera, and Crystal Govea is the violin trio that received a one. I'm super excited. I renamed the group to the Chief Chamber Orchestra because the chamber orchestra is a small group of musicians. We may be small, but these students have a lot to offer and I'm excited to continue working on, on their musicianship and to work on the legacy. So hopefully, with the years come down with the sixth graders that are coming up now, that eventually that the Chief Chamber Orchestra becomes the elite group at Lakeview. That is my hope and my dream for this program.
That concludes this evening's recognition of our music programs. We want to extend our appreciation to all of our sponsors and congratulate our students for their fine accomplishments. Thank you all for joining us this evening on Zoom.
Yeah, that was awesome. I think even though we didn't get to see the kids and meet them personally, it was, we had an opportunity to maybe find out a little bit more about each student. So that worked out really well, Dr. Gomez. Thank you. That covers our cheerleaders and our, all of our musicians. Our next recognition is for someone who's near and dear to all of us, Mr. Wilcox, Jack.
Absolutely. So for our final recognition of the evening, our communication specialist, Jack Wilcox, was honored with multiple state awards at the Texas School Public Relations Association, or TESPRA Conference, including a best of category award and seven gold star awards. You can see the full story on our SAISD website. For anyone who follows our web stories or our presence on our social media platforms, those are top-notch, high-quality as a result of Mr. Wilcox and all of his contributions. He's currently hard at work in our audio/video studio, so we're highlighting Mr. Wilcox up on our screen and want to extend our sincere appreciation as he's an active and valuable member of our team. Thank you, Mr. Wilcox.
Sure, go ahead, Dr. Della.
Mr. Lehman and board and constituents, I just want to again highlight the work of Jack Wilcox. He continues to do an amazing job for our district, really highlighting all the ways our students are smart and celebrating that as well as highlighting our staff. Jack really filled the trophy case for SAISD at the TESPRA meeting. And we just continue to be amazed at the work he does for our school district. I think as we are seeing tonight, in an age of digital learning and digital marketing, I believe the work Jack does is just an incredible asset to, to San Angelo proper, not just our school district. So we just want to thank Jack Wilcox for his continued efforts and he continues to be a shining star for our city and our school district. Thank you, Jack.
Yeah, our board certainly echoes that. He's a huge asset to our district. We appreciate him and his patience at many of our board meetings. He gets to stay here and, and, and sit and wait on us to finish when we're in closed session. So we really appreciate Jack. I'll move forward. That covers all of our recognitions. I'll move forward for approval of our minutes. Do we have a motion to approve? We have a motion from Mr. Gallegos and a second from Mr. Dindell to approve the minutes of our February 10th, 2020 Special Finance Pre-Agenda Meeting. to approve the minutes of our February 10, 2020, Special Finance Pre-A agenda meeting and our February 18, 2020, regular board meeting. Are there any corrections or additions for any of our board team? Any public comment concerning our motion? If not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposing, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Our next item's item six. This is reserved for anyone from the public wishing to make comments to our board team on items not on our agenda this evening. I don't see anybody out in our hallway wishing to do that. And we'll also ask for a comment on each item before we call for our vote there. That covers item six. Item seven is our reports. These are provided by Dr. McFarland in our Friday Facts, our student enrollment report for the 24th Monday of school, which was February 24 of 2020. We were up 45 students versus last year. So, again, we thank the community for your confidence in allowing us to educate your students. Our next item's item B. We're going to get an update on academic progress from Dr. Ritter as she enters the room.
Thank you, Dr. Delaf, Mr. Lehman, and members of the board. And we're excited to just provide an update today to our virtual learning platform that we have rolled out in the district. I will say, the last week has been a remarkable one, one that, in which we have encountered some challenges that none of us have encountered before, right? From the curriculum and instruction side, it has been absolutely, we see it as a great opportunity that we have been able to, excuse me, move forward. A digital platform of virtual learning for all of our students, pre-K through 12th grade, that we are rolling out. Today was the first day, and it has gone extremely well. So, I'm going to give you a brief review of this. You have a green folder at your places. And so, my presentation is the first. And then I have some other documents to share with you for you to just take and prove on your own that go into more depth with some of the components of our virtual learning plan. So, in elementary, we are really going with a blended approach. This week, week one of our platform, we had paper packets distributed at all of our campuses. Week two and beyond, we know we're trying to move to more virtual learning for all of our students. So, I'll talk about device rollout here in a minute because it certainly impacts that. The paper packet distribution has gone very well. They just had a successful, great turnout. Being able to see the kids from a distance and let the families have what they needed to have to move forward with their learning this week. In secondary, the virtual learning through Google Classroom and Zoom is our platforms started today. There is an expectation for our students to check in virtually through the week with their teacher. And our teachers are also providing scheduled virtual tutorial and support sessions through Zoom, which we've all learned how to Zoom lately. That's how we're doing all of our conferences. That's how we're doing our meetings. That's how our teachers are connecting with their students virtually as well. And as a parent of a high school student who was able to access her virtual learning today, it was really awesome to see that the Google Classroom is working and that the kids are also connecting with their teachers. There were about 30 kids in the classroom through Zoom with one of the teacher's tutorial times. And so, it was exciting to see. And we anticipate that this success is just going to continue. We have had quite a bit of very positive feedback through it, along with some questions. And I'll talk in a minute about our communication plan to address those questions. Something also to be said here is just to know that as we move forward with this plan, of course, we're learning every day. This is a very fluid situation. And sometimes, we're learning things hour by hour, getting updates from TEA, also from just other sources. We look at other districts and what some of the other districts who are a little bit further ahead in this than us, and getting ideas about what's working. We know that there are questions, you know, like about grading. We're trying to figure all of those things out as we go as well. But we want to make sure that we're making the right choices. For now, getting our kids with their devices and with their learning and moving forward is our goal, and making those connections with their teachers. But also, to know that for both elementary and secondary, our special education department is working closely with campus staff to customize individualized plans for our students with special needs. Diane Underwood, who was our director for Special Education and Special Programs, is getting guidance from TEA, which is the Texas Education Agency, on a daily basis, sometimes more than once a day. And we are starting to put together our plan for that individualized support for our students with special needs. So, we will continue to work with our campus staff and parents for those individualized plans for those students. Next, with devices and internet access. So, all secondary campuses right now are distributing devices to any student needing one. Our goal right now is to start with our secondary students who do not have access to a device at this time. And then, we will go from there and see if then we'll move to elementary and determine how many devices we have to move down into elementary. And some of our elementaries have enough also, and they're starting distribution as well. Every campus has a little bit different plan, which is fine because they're going to need to customize for the needs of their families and their students and parents. But it's happening. As a matter of fact, today, we know that we, about 1,200 devices were distributed just from yesterday and today with the campuses that have already moved forward with that. So, it's happening, and it's successful. There are some questions, again. Those are things that we ask people to just contact their campus. The campuses are extremely supportive, and they have the answers to help the families with that access. We will be, like I said, assessing the inventory that is remaining and completing elementary distribution through next week so that we can move forward with more virtual in elementary as well. As you've probably heard mentioned before, we have 23 buses stationed in locations around the district to provide internet access hotspots. We saw lots of students out there today using the hotspots spread out, and they were accessing those spots. Our goal is that we're working with vendors to get some personal hotspots that can go to homes. So, we're working on assessing the need for that and securing those devices as well. So, with communication, just a reminder that as questions arise, which they will, as issues arise, which they will, we ask the first point of contact for our families be the campus, the campus first, to call the campus. And the campus principal, you can email the campus principal. There are people on the campuses that are checking the voicemail, and our principals are checking their emails regularly throughout the day, and we'll get back with you. Also, our teachers. With elementary students, the Class Dojo is proving to be very successful as a tool for communication and for distribution of information. And Google Classroom, the most important for secondary. And that's the virtual platform that they are using for their instruction right now. We also have, just for information, Facebook Live Sessions by our Curriculum and Instruction Department every Monday, Wednesday, Friday at 3 o'clock. So, we finished our second one of those today. And we're looking at those questions that people are submitting through the session, the live session. Then they can also go back and reference that video, and it's recorded on our district Facebook page. And they can post questions to that as well. And so, then, when we have the next session, we answer the questions that came through from the previous session. So, that seemed to be helpful today. Phones are also being answered on campuses. Again, leave voicemail. Principals are checking messages. And we also are sending updates through Swift K-12. I think parents have been very pleased to see that those texts go out on a regular basis with updates for them to have more information about what we're doing in the district. Another area that I just wanted to highlight is our social-emotional context. We are currently developing a social-emotional learning platform to support the needs of our students and families. We understand that this is a very stressful time, unprecedented stressful time for many, many people in our community. And we are here to support. Our campus counselors are available. We ask that you call your campus. Teachers are setting up virtual groups that students can connect with classmates through the Zoom. And that's already starting to happen. And I think our kids, you know, just need to still feel connected. That's why it's so important for them to get onto the Google Classroom and connect with their teachers. Also, just if your own children are experiencing high stress and anxiety, we're here to support. Just call your campus counselor, and we're certainly here to support you through that. And lastly, we look at this as an unplanned opportunity to grow. We know that today, an estimated 7,000-plus students logged into their virtual learning platform. That's pretty remarkable. The things that we do see, that we know our learner profile attributes are being met, that we see things like our students connecting globally, exhibiting flexibility and adaptability, that they certainly are sharing responsibility for their collaborative work, and that they are showing perseverance and resilience in challenges. And this is, these are all attributes in our learner profile. So, even through these challenges, we feel we are helping our students, and we're helping them grow. Also, our educator profile, that we have teachers showing this resiliency, compassion, challenging existing ways of thinking, and really doing what they can to establish and build a collaborative culture, even if it's virtually. Our teachers and our principals and our staff, we just can't say enough about how hard they have worked to put this all together and to make this happen. We're very, very proud of this virtual learning platform. We think it's a model for other districts in the state. And we just appreciate everyone's support, including all of our families out there. The flexibility, grace, and compassion that we all have for each other through this time is so appreciated. And we know great things will come as a result of working together to meet the needs of our students and families. So, thank you very much. Any questions?
Thanks, Dr. Ritter. Questions for, yes, go ahead, Amy.
Not a question. But I just wanted to thank you so much for, you and your team, so much for all the work that you've done. My kids logged in today, and we're so excited to see their teachers and talk to their friends on the Google Classroom. They were able to talk about their experiences on spring break and what they've been doing. And it was just so great to see them excited about that. And I also wanted to just really acknowledge the teachers who wrote letters to their students and did videos on Google Classroom. Watching them was just heartwarming, just really, they were so excited to get a chance to talk to their students. And it's really what education should be all about.
Very. Thank you so much.
Yes, Dr. Delaf.
Mr. Lehman, board, I just want to recognize the work and efforts of our Curriculum and Instruction Department, leadership of Dr. Ritter. They deployed quickly. I refer to them as the National Guard of Academics. When we received information that this may be a possibility, the team was gathered quickly, remotely, and in person, working feverishly to try to make certain that the needs of our new learning platform met the needs of kids. So, I just want to commend your team, Dr. Ritter. And I believe on page three and four of one of your stapled packets in the green folder, there's a list of many of the team members' names that helped with this endeavor. So, I just want to highlight our leadership team and also those members of our staff that made this become a reality. It was incredible. I also want to kind of extend on Ms. Amy Moselle Flint's comments as well, that I think we are feeling earlier today what our teachers are feeling without kids present. So, it was hard to go through those, our earlier recognitions, without the students, you know, seeing the human spirit alive and well and in front of you. So, many of our teachers are going through that and kids as well. And I just think, in kind of regards to Amy's comments, that's why it's so critical for our teachers to connect. And I've just been so proud of being a team member here when you see the many videos that are posted on social media outlets, having my own, having our own daughter in the school system, the teachers that are reaching out to them and just providing that connection, which is so critical during a period of crisis. So, I just want to thank our leadership team, Curriculum and Instruction Office, for creating a robust virtual platform that I believe, as I've indicated via social media before, that I believe 100 years from now, historians will look back, and they will profess that this event, this crisis, will change the delivery of content in the health industry, education, and business as we see it. So, it's challenging and exciting times, and proud to be a part of this community, to buckle down together and see it through to the other side. So, thank you.
Thank you. And Dr. Delaf, you reminded me, because I meant to point out what you had in your packet, and I forgot. So, I'm glad he brought that to my attention. So, in your packet, you do have the Secondary Virtual Learning Handbook. It's an example of the Virtual Learning Handbook that we created. For, this is the secondary one. We have the same one for elementary, just with the specifics for elementary in there as well. But this would be a great way for you to just kind of look through and familiarize yourself, some of the details of the plan, whereas people have questions for you even. This might be helpful. This here, the checklist, is a teacher checklist. It's just one of the examples. We had one in secondary, one in elementary. For the two days last week where we had the teachers working virtually in their virtual PLCs, this is the work that they were doing and completing to get ready for this week of instruction. So, that is included in there as well. And lastly, an at-home daily learning plan example for elementary. So, you can see an example of, this was created by our team to give as an example, a model for our elementary teachers. And all of them just took off and created their own and customized them. And we're seeing all kinds of great stuff out there in the district. This is an example of what those teachers are putting together, what they put together for this week. And then, as I say, we move more virtual into elementary. That is also blended in here as well. So, that should give you some, an idea of some of the work that we've done. So, we appreciate your support so much. Thank you.
Other questions for, or comments for Dr. Ritter? Thanks, Janet. We appreciate, go ahead.
I'd like to have one more comment. Thank you, Janet, for, and Dr. Delaf, for all of y'all staying ahead of the game, of this whole thing. I know what, three weeks ago, y'all were already looking at how to approach all this. And I know y'all were meeting, and I think I've had two kids, two or three kids, that have told me, "Why didn't we do school like this before?" So, I mean, a lot of them have been really receptive to it. And those kids know, they know how to get on this stuff. It's just amazing how quick they adapt. So, and I'm glad y'all were there to lead the way. Y'all have done a wonderful job, and I can't say enough. I mean, it's just, y'all have handled this very well. And I am very, very proud of each and every one of y'all. I really am. Thank you.
Thanks, Gerard. Other comments, questions? Certainly, an unplanned opportunity to grow. I think that's a great way for us to end this. And thank you for all your hard work and our team's hard work. And it's really enlightening and encouraging for us to watch, you know, our teams work as we move forward. So, it's still a learning process. And as Dr. Ritter pointed out, if we've got problems or we've got issues, then take those to the campus. And we're going to work through those and make it as good as it can possibly be, maybe even better. So, thank you. Sure.
Just one more question. And I know it's still a learning process, so I don't know if you have a plan for this yet. But a few people have asked me how attendance will be counted. So, will that be by logging in every day, or how does that work?
So, it's a challenge, to say the least. But we do know that with secondary, that is one thing that, they're using their Google Classroom. The expectation is that they're logging in every day. Their teachers are checking in with them. We also have the ability to go in. I think Mr. Underwood and Ms. Huddleston today did some virtual learning walks because we have access to the virtual classrooms. We can go in and see and make sure that teachers have their lessons going, that there's response. We can see exactly how many students have logged in and checked in, even from our end. But principals are doing that, so there's a lot of oversight and just checking in. It's pretty amazing. Also, we have, through Mr. Underwood and Ms. Huddleston, a principal Google Classroom. So, the principals are the students in this Google Classroom setting, and they're the instructors. They're putting in their certain things to remind principals to do. So, all of these things are reminders that we give our principals through that virtual platform as well. So, it's this constant cycle of checking up. If we find that there are students who just are not surfacing and are not checking in, then that's when we're going to figure out how we need to make a direct connection. And we have staff on hand to do that. We're working on that right now. But really, we've had a great response, and so far, so good. As far as actual attendance, we know that we can count our we know that we can count our state attendance if we are showing that we are doing what we can to provide instruction to our students. It's just a little bit of a challenge to check to see every day what they're doing, but we are working on that, and it's that communication with our parents is imperative. So, we just encourage all of our parents to really do what they can to make sure that their students are definitely logging in daily to their Google Classrooms. Uh-huh, thank you.
Hopefully, they'll do more than just log in.
Um, yes. We want to see some work.
That's right, yeah, yeah.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay, that concludes the report section of our agenda. Our next item is item eight, our consent items, consent items A through C. Do we have a motion to approve those?
Motion to approve consent items A through C.
We have a motion from Dr. Kingman and a second from Mr. Parker to approve our consent items. Item A's donations, we have those listed on the board. We appreciate, especially the Glenmore Jetpack boosters. I think that was a pretty significant contribution. We appreciate that group. Item B's, consider approval of our quarterly investment report ending February 29th of 2020. And item C's, to consider our cooperative purchasing organizations. Both those items were discussed at length at our pre-agenda board workshop, which was last Monday. Do we have any comments or questions, or would anybody like to pull any of those items prior to our approval? Any public comment? If not, all in favor of our motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Our next item is to consider our bills, accounts, and financial statements for the month of February 2020.
Move for approval?
Second.
We have a motion from Mr. Dindal and a second from Dr. Kingman to approve our bills, accounts, and financial statements for the month of February 2020. Do we have any board comments or questions concerning our motion?
Mr. Lehman, just a note to the public that we've reviewed all those reports in detail at our pre-agenda meeting last week. And in addition to that, all these reports can be found online at our website, saisd.org, under the Fiscal Responsibility tab.
Thanks, Mr. Dindal. Other questions or comments concerning our bills, accounts, and financial statements? Any public comment? If not, all in favor of our motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Our next item is item 10, consider proposed amendment to the district's official budget in our general fund. Do we have a motion to approve?
Move for approval?
So, we have a motion from Mr. Dindal and a second from Mr. Gallegos to approve the proposed amendment to the district's official budget. This is a budget, expands our expenditures by five, I got to get to that page, 66.
The move of $5 million is dedicated, from our dedicated fund balance to our general budget. Is that we outlined during budgeting in August?
Yeah, thanks, Dr. Kingman. So, that's for HVAC project at Lincoln and Glen, the Diedrich and Jim concession project, and also purchase orders that were rolled forward at the end of the year. So, that totals $5,525,603. Any other board comment or questions? Any public comment? If not, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Our next item is to consider superintendent's recommendations for 2021. These are our administrators' contracts. Those were included. Ms. Hopkins included those in our board package today. So, does anybody have any questions about any of that? Do we have a motion to approve?
Move to approve superintendent's recommendations for 2021, 2020, 2021 administrators' contracts.
Thanks, Mr. Parker. We have a motion from Mr. Parker and a second from Mr. Gallegos to approve superintendent's recommendations of our administrators' contracts for the year 2020, 2021. Any board comment or questions concerning our motion? Any public comment? If not, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Our next item is a new item, and Dr. Gomez is here. We're going to move 12, and then we're going to move 21 to this same area. We're going to consider employee compensation during emergency school closure. That's item 12. And then, item 21 is consider resolution regarding delegation of temporary purchasing authority to the superintendent. Dr. Gomez, are you ready to do that?
Yes. Dr. McFarland is also joining us.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
If that's okay.
Okay. Sorry, Dr. McFarland. I forgot y'all were hiding back there in the kitchen.
You have the full resolution, but we want to highlight a few pieces for you this evening. This is in regards to our COVID-19 school closure compensation plan. Some background is the district determined that closing schools from March 16th through March 20th, 2020, due to the COVID-19 pandemic, was in the best interest of the students, staff, and community. The school closure is anticipated to remain in effect through April 10th, 2020. The district should make determinations related to compensation for all employees during the emergency closure of school. We have a DEA local policy that guides us on pay during closing. During an emergency closure, all employees shall continue to be paid for their regular duty schedule unless otherwise provided by board action. Following an emergency closure, the board shall adopt a resolution or take other board action establishing the purpose and parameters for such payments. Pay during closing per the board resolution that each of you have. Beginning on March 19th, 2020, the district entered a period of modified operations, which shall continue until at least April 10th, 2020, during which time all regular employees shall be compensated at their regular hourly, daily, or salary rate of pay according to their regular duty schedule, and regardless of whether the employee is performing services remotely or on-site. Per our board resolution, the compensation plan recommendation states the board determines there is a public purpose and benefit to San Angelo ISD to continue to pay employees during this period of modified operations due to the closure of Texas schools and the declaration of a public health emergency. The board hereby authorizes the superintendent to return to the standard employee compensation structure at such time as he determines that normal operations may be safely and lawfully resumed.
Dr. Gomez, may I add to this as well? This is in constant communication with the Texas Association of School Boards and our legal counsel. Unfortunately, every district in Texas is faced with this issue, but I just want to thank Dr. Gomez and Dr. McFarland for consultation with the Texas Association of School Boards, well as our Walsh-Gallegos counsel as well. So, as our board is considering these resolutions, I just want to provide that background information as well.
Thanks, Dr. Detloff. Other questions for Dr. Gomez? So, we need a motion to approve our resolution of the Board of Trustees.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution addressing the employee compensation during emergency school closures.
Thank you, Mr. Gallegos. Do we have a second?
Second.
A second from Mr. Dindal. Any other board questions or comments? It's nice to be able to continue to provide compensation for our employees during an uncertain time. Many in our community are not privileged to do so, so it's nice as a school district for us to be able to do that. And a lot of our workers are working maybe harder than they ever have, and certainly, this relieves a little tension and anxiety for those folks. So, if we don't have any other comment, do we have any public comment? Dr. Detloff?
Mr. Lehman, I just want to take this time to thank our San Angelo ISD Board of Trustees. You all have had the willingness the entire time to make sure that we do it right for our employees, and we are grateful for that. And our entire staff, educators, and every department is grateful for that. So, we sincerely appreciate your wisdom and guidance through this event, and we also are grateful that you want to make sure and ensure that our staff continue to receive compensation for their work, whether that be virtually or physically. So, thank you for, again, looking out for the needs and wellness and overall health of our community and school district. We all know that, and all believe in this room, that public schools are the cornerstone of our democracy, and we believe that it's the bellwether of our community. So, thank you for guidance and support in this initiative.
Thanks, Dr. Detloff. Any other questions or comments? Any public comment? If not, all in favor of our motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Our next item, as we move forward, as I mentioned, is consider resolution regarding delegation of temporary purchasing authority, and Dr. McFarland is going to cover that for us.
Thank you, Mr. Lehman, Dr. Detloff, members of the board. Appreciate this opportunity to address you. On the previous topic, just real briefly, one of the items that is typically asked in the district with continuing of pay with employees is, can we afford to do that? Obviously, as the person who's over finance, that's a question I get. One of the things I want to assure the board, and first of all, again, thank you for your action there to take measures and action to take care of the members of the San Angelo ISD employee bank there, is that the budget is budgeted for a number of days for employees. So, that money is budgeted for. We don't get funded on the amount of days employees come to work. So, understand that that money is budgeted for. And as Dr. Detloff had mentioned, with our communication with legal counsel and communication with Texas Association of School Boards, and even through the commissioners' updates regularly, the understanding is that the funding revenue stream will continue to come through these districts. So, that money has been budgeted for to pay people, regardless if they're here physically, or regardless if they're working remotely or whatnot. So, those things are in plan. As you well know, I, again, appreciate you and your patience with us getting this on the agenda in a late form. It came to you as an emergency agenda supplement. And it's a purchasing plan that, again, in association with conversations with Tasby and legal counsel, that many, this is very common of what districts are doing, because they're experiencing, obviously, during this fluid time of change in our school system, they're experiencing expenses and purchases and needs that they previously have not had before. And as y'all have seen with our Curriculum Instruction Department and the opportunity, they've had to roll out such a tremendous platform for our students and try to meet the needs there for our learning of our individuals. A lot of those things come into play with a need to get those things in place quickly. As you well know, CH local policy identifies that there is a $25,000 limit of purchasing, that anything that the superintendent wants to purchase above that amount comes to the board for approval. That's in our own CH local policy. Along with CH local policy, in association with that, is Texas Education Code 44.031A, which basically addresses the limit of $50,000 and procurement processes that go along with ensuring that we're in legal guidelines of making sure that we go through the bidding processes and those things that are required by the state of Texas. Both of these are mentioned here because this resolution proposes to you that there is a temporary suspension of following local policy, CH local, and Texas Education Code, as mentioned here. So, per the board resolution, the board determines that the district's best interests are served by delegating authority to the superintendent to secure negotiating contract for good services beyond the amounts dictated by CH local and Texas Education Code, which are required to respond to district needs caused by COVID-19. And the neat thing about this one that we talked lengthy about, that's a little different than what they're doing for other districts, is because we value the oversight of this board and want their continued input on the financial stability and the financial direction of this district, this is a resolution that basically goes into a week and can be revisited weekly. Okay? So, as the resolution is written at this point, the requirements of CH local in Section 44.031 of the Texas Education Code will be reviewed weekly at the board's virtual meetings in order to determine either the continuation or cessation of this practice of allowing the superintendent to approve those purchases beyond $25,000.
Thanks, Dr. McFarland. That's for adding that. That's important. And certainly, as it's outlined in paragraph four, it says, "We'll report all, the superintendent will report all purchases of goods and services under this resolution to the board, and will present to the board budget amendments and subsequent ratification of contracts entered into under the authority of this resolution as soon as reasonably practicable." Practicable. So, you know, we're going to be updated on a consistent basis, and we're only doing this a week at a time currently, so.
Yes, sir. Mr. Lehman, I just wanted to add to that. It's not a coincidence that under our board's direction, for 17 consecutive years, we've received the highest marks in the state financial system for financial integrity. So, I appreciate Dr. McFarland for adding this second point, because we certainly wanted that oversight and the checks and balances that are provided by this second bulleted item with our board. We believe that if we reviewed that on a weekly basis, and certainly, communication would be continuous and ongoing, but it would provide you all the determination to cease or continue this practice during an emergency closure. So, we appreciate that guidance and want that guidance, and it has worked extremely well for the last 17 years. So, we appreciate that, and we will also, later on in Becky Hopkins segment, making sure that we schedule some upcoming weekly virtual meetings. If we don't need those meetings, we can always cancel or postpone, but having them on the agenda and posted would help us work through this emergency situation.
Thanks, Dr. Detloff. So, I'll move that we approve the resolution regarding delegation of temporary purchasing authority to the superintendent. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Mr. Parker. So, we have a motion from Mr. Lehman, second from Mr. Parker. Do we have any other board comment or questions concerning our resolution?
If you look at bullet number three, it does state that the suspension of these requirements, CH local and Section 44.031A, that they will continue until at least March 30th, just to let the public know, to March 30th. And then afterwards, we will commence weekly virtual meetings, continue and revisit the district's needs. So, this is going to be going to March 30th, and if we want to go further, then we can, would we revisit it, would we revisit it again, or just?
At our virtual meeting, yeah.
At our virtual meeting, okay.
And, you know, at some point in time, we may determine at our virtual meeting that we extend it to two weeks rather than one week. But it's, you know, because it's kind of an emergency agenda item this evening, it makes sense for us to do it a week now, and then we'll make determination as a board team later. So, we have a motion and a second. Thanks for your comment and question, Gerard. Any other questions or comments from our board team? Any public comment? If not, all in favor of our motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Thanks, Dr. McFarland, for bringing that to our attention, and we'll look forward to working through this together. Item 13, consider the official appointment to the Board of Trustees of MHMR Services for the Concho Valley. I think these are appointment of Board of Trustees, filling positions as Ms. Mazel Flint helped us with at our pre-agenda.
Well, I actually need to recuse myself from this part.
Oh, that's right. Thank you.
Because I work for a program with MHMR.
That's why we left it on the agenda, rather than moving it to consent. So, Ms. Mazel Flint will not vote and will not take part in any discussion that we might have on this topic. So, we'll wait for her to leave before we make a motion to approve, and then we'll recover her shortly. So, do we have a motion to approve the appointment of Board of Trustees to the MHMR Services of the Concho Valley?
We make a motion to approve the official appointment of the nominee as recommended by the liaison representative, Donald W. McKee. Is that clear, C?
Second.
Good, great motion, Gerard. Thanks for your second bill. So, we have a motion from Mr. Gallegos and a second from Mr. Dindel to approve the nominees as requested by the liaison representatives to provide a duly constituted board of trustees as required by Texas laws regarding mental health and mental retardation. Is there any other board comments or questions concerning our motion? Any public comment? If not, all in favor of our motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. We can maybe recover Ms. Mizele Flint.
Next week, she'd have to sign out and sign back in.
And Ms. Hopkins, you did indicate that the vote was 6-0 instead of 7-0, and we'll welcome Amy back.
Five-oh.
Oh, I'm sorry, 5-oh, because Art's not here. 5-oh, thank you. So, we'll move forward to item 14, which is Consider Bid Number 20-002, which is Transportation Radio Project, which has handhelds and radios for our buses. Mr. Henry's here to help us with that.
Thank you for having me here tonight. Currently, the San Angelo ISD Transportation Department is using an analog radio system that is outdated and does not offer the clarity or distance needed. Transportation submitted a capital request to replace all analog radios with new digital radios for their department, and RFP was prepared for all necessary materials and labor to complete the install. We received two quality bids for this project. A scoring committee was assembled and Texas Communications of San Angelo received the highest score. The administration recommends contracting with Texas Communications to install new digital bus radios for the total cost of $47,750. A contingency of $10,000 will be added to this price for any unforeseen changes. Y'all have any questions over the radio project?
Questions for Mr. Henry? This is another item we discussed in detail last week, so I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve the Transportation Radio Project handheld and bus radio allocation.
Second.
Thanks. So, we have a motion from Dr. Kingman and a second from Mr. Dindel to contract with Texas Communications to install new digital bus radios at a total cost of $47,750 with a contingency of $10,000. Any other board comments or questions concerning our motion? Any public comment? If not, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Thank you, Jason. We'll move forward, Mr. Henry, to our new restroom and concessions bid at the Diedrickson Gym at Central High School.
During the budgeting process, the board identified five projects to pursue during the 1920 school year. One of these projects was the renovation of the restrooms and concessions at Diedrickson Gym. This facility opened its doors in 1958. While the same bathrooms have serviced this facility for 62 years, they are too small and are not ADA compliant. KWF Architects of San Angelo, in coordination with Central High School and the Athletics Department, designed a new bathroom layout that will not only increase the size and number of bathrooms, but will also add additional room in the lobby area. Two alternates were added to this bid. Alternate one was for a new wheelchair lift platform. This will not only add a larger handicap lift to the home side, it will also assist maintenance in moving floor maintenance equipment onto our new playing surface. During the bidding process, a sewer backup identified a sewer pipe that needed to be replaced that feeds the current restrooms. It is also an original 1958 pipe. Specs were created and sent to companies that perform this type of work. We received four quality bids and one no bid. A scoring committee was assembled and Henthorn Commercial received the highest score and the lowest, or, yes, the highest score and the lowest price. Their bid price of $1,048,000 includes a $75,000 contingency. The district committed $1 million towards this project, with the remaining coming out of unassigned fund balance. Administration recommends contracting with Henthorn Commercial for the renovation of the central D gym restrooms and accepting both alternates for the turnkey price of $1,048,000.
Thanks, Mr. Henry. Questions or comments concerning this project? Do we have a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve the administration's recommendation of contracting with Henthorn Commercial for the renovation of the central D gym restrooms and accepting both alternates for the turnkey price of $1,048,000.
Thanks, Mr. Gallegos. I'll second that motion. So, we have a motion from Mr. Gallegos and a second from Mr. Lehman. And quality bids, all of them are really close, so we, I think it's proof positive that, you know, we did a good job with the bidding process and had some great contractors that were really close in their costs, so.
Kenny Frankie Architects did a great job of pounding the pavement, making sure we got plenty of contractors that had plans in their hands and wanted projects, so I want to thank them.
That's good. Thank you.
Just real quick, Jason, what's the timeframe on this?
All of these projects are supposed to finish by August.
By August.
Right now, we're, the way that this one's planned, since spring sports won't be affected, we're going to go ahead and start this project anyway as soon as we get approval.
Okay.
Good questions, Gerard. Other questions? If not, do we have any public comment concerning our motion? All in favor of our motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Our next items, Consider RFQ Number 20-01. This is for stadium turf and track resurfacing at San Angelo Stadium. Mr. Henry?
1956 San Angelo Stadium was built and later expanded in 1963. In 1964, photographs of the stadium were featured in an exhibition at the Museum of Modern Art in New York City as an example of modern engineering. In 2003, the stadium grass was removed to make way for new turf. The life expectancy for this turf was eight years. Nine years later, in 2012, we replaced the turf with our current turf surface. Since the first installation, the use of San Angelo Stadium has continued to grow. The stadium not only hosts football games, but also hosts high school soccer games, band competitions, high school track, and district celebrations. The community uses the facility for events such as Little Olympics, city rec track meets, YMCA Super Bowls, and kids marathon, just to name a few. With all of the use of the stadium, it is now time to replace the turf and the track surface. Not only are the surfaces showing wear, but the track does not have current UIL markings and advances in turf technology will allow, will also decrease the possibility of injuries. Requests for quotes were sent to eight vendors, three submitted pricing, and one submitted a no bid. A committee was assembled and the responses were scored. Hellis Construction received the highest score. Their price of $1,080,931 includes new Matrix turf surface with Helix technology, a 19-millimeter shock pad underlay for safety, an EcoTherm infield to reduce field temps by as much as 20 degrees, and a new Q3000 full pore track surface. The administration recommends contracting with Hellis Construction for the replacement of both turf and track surfaces at San Angelo Stadium for $1,080,931, which includes a $50,000 contingency. Additional costs will include project management by SKG Engineering. Do y'all have any questions over that project?
Questions from our board team?
And where are they starting this? Well, what's the timeline on this one as well?
Currently, we're slated not to start it until after spring football. So, once spring football is over, then we can start. And they're supposed, they are to have it completed no later than August 1st.
So, regardless of whether we have spring football or not, they'll have it finished by August 1st?
Right.
Right, so.
I'll make a motion on this. I will make a note to our audience that Hellis Construction was here last week and gave a very impressive presentation for us and brought samples of the product, and we had a good visit with Hellis Construction. So, I'll move that we approve administration's recommendation, contract with Hellis Construction for the replacement of both the turf and track service at San Angelo Stadium, which for a price of $1,080,931, which includes a $50,000 contingency, and also project management by SKG Engineering.
Thanks, Mr. Parker.
Second.
We have a motion from Mr. Parker and a second from Dr. Kingman. And thanks, Max, for your comments, certainly an impressive presentation last week from Hellis Group. And I think turf has come a long way. You know, it's interesting to see as we progress with artificial turf and the way they control temperature and reduce injuries and things like that. I think we're moving, we're moving forward with as good a surface as we can get. So, thank y'all for y'all's work on that.
Yeah, we'll point out for the audiences that it was mentioned by Mr. Henry briefly, but this has a different type of under pad that is, will help with the concussions that we haven't had before. And for those that have gone to the game and see all the black, when someone's tackled it, goes up, which are little pieces of black rubber, that is now being replaced with a different product that's better than the black little rubber balls that were, so we won't see any of that anymore, so.
They also give us an eight-year warranty on the product.
Right. The turf has an eight-year warranty, and then the shock pad actually has a 25-year warranty. And they said that when we replace the turf, we won't have to buy the shock pad, so the next time we do it, the price should go down.
Don't write that on the wall.
No.
So.
And if I'm not mistaken, that thing, the turf is, this is the same as a Cowboys turf.
It is. It is the same turf that the Cowboys have on their state. There's several NFL teams that have.
Thanks for that. So, we have a motion and a second. Any further board comment? Do we have any public comment? If not, all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Thanks for your work on that. Next is Consider Special Ed Software Replacement. Is Ms. Underwood? Thank you, Ms. Underwood, for your patience again, for waiting patiently in another room. Welcome.
No problem. This is regarding, like I talked about at the last meeting.
Pull your mic down a little bit, so, yeah.
Is that better?
Yes, much better.
This is regarding the special education software replacement, and at the last meeting, we talked about the purpose of that. During our TEA audit this year, it was recommended the district move to a different IP system. There were legal and compliance issues related to the current system. Also, the current system has not been updated in a few years as it is rolling out and not going to be replaced, so it will be obsolete in a full year. If we use a different IP software system other than Power tool that we're currently using, then we'll have to change all of our 504 system. We are seeking to do that as well. We are looking for a software system that supports the whole child, IP, 504, all of their needs, that is aligned to Texas laws and IDA compliance. We received two quality quotes for this software, both companies at the specification and program features. The scoring criteria was wide. Frontline Technology received the highest score. It was fairly close in looking at the qualifications, but the frontline, we are already using that for our absence management system, so it's already, we're already using. It also, this IP software is used in over 85% of the day. The people that they have on staff are familiar with Texas laws, so the compliance issues are not an issue with this company. Nothing changes in the legislation. They update the forms automatically, so we're automatically in compliance. It offers lead technical support via online support services. They also offer a transfer capability, like I mentioned before. So, if a student moves into our district that is coming from another district that also uses Frontline, it's a simple transfer of records and we immediately know how to serve this student from day one, not waiting on records to be sent to us. This system also offers a 504 program that we're looking at also purchasing. There are other programs, RTI, EL, LPAC, that could be considered later on, but currently, right now, we're looking at the IP and 504. And it is the administration's recommendation to approve the Frontline Technologies Group to implement the new IP and 504 software for the two-year cost of $88,986.92. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Mrs. Underwood. Questions for Gerard?
We're getting this to implement the, was it IP and 504? And you said we can, I guess, add other stuff to that?
If we choose to eventually use some of the other programs for, like our English learners, a way to document those services. Currently, right now, we're just looking at the IP and 504, but there are options later on.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Other questions? Thanks, Gerard, for that. Any other questions? If not, do we have a motion to approve?
Look for approval of the special education software replacement for two years that have cost up $88,986.92.
Thanks, Mr. Dindel. We have a motion from Mr. Dindel and a second from Mr. Parker. Any further board comments or questions? Thanks, Ms. Underwood, for the great job you're doing in, with our special programs and implementing this program. So, thank you for bringing that to us.
Thank you for approving this. This will be great for our district.
Okay. So, do we have a motion to approve? Do we have any public comment? All in favor of our motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Our motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Shelley is back there, so Ms. Hollahan's going to come forward and update us on these many, many TASB Board Update Policy 114. Shelley?
Actually, Mr. Underwood did a fabulous PowerPoint presentation at the pre-agenda meeting, and I understand that probably you put this on the agenda, not on the consent agenda because of BED Local. And obviously, that was one we pulled off of the TASB policy because you all had a meeting with our attorney, and really, that was, that one is designed for you all, our board. So, do you have a question on that one, or do I need to get Mr. Underwood out here to answer any of your questions?
No, not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
We are changing our audience participation policy a little bit, and if anybody that's watching this or someone that normally comes to our board meetings, since we don't have much of an audience this evening, if they want to look at this new policy, it is BED Local.
Yes, sir.
And we're making every effort to include our public and allowing them to participate in our meetings. We do have some safety and guidelines that allow us to, whoever's leading our meetings, to make sure that we stay on task and we don't have, you know, too many comments, but this is work that we've been doing with our attorney at Walska Gallegos, and I think it continues to, a longstanding tradition, which is one that, where we believe in allowing the community to come to our meeting and take part in our meetings and, at the same time, not control our meetings.
Correct.
So, I think we've worked hard on this policy and our board feels pretty good about it.
Mr. Lehman, I'd like to add also that our legal counsel indicated that San Angelo ISD has one of the most open, transparent policies in regard to public comment across the state. So, I think that's been really held in the high standard for many, many years, that we want to hear public comment. I think for us, it's just the organizational piece of that is certainly having individuals sign up, approach the podium, so that we can make sure we record their public sign up, approach the podium, so that we can make sure we record their public comment, and also that we have a chance to get all the information and respond in a, in a timely manner to that comment. So, again, I just wanted to reiterate that we've had an open, very transparent public comment policy for many, many years, and I appreciate our, our board, legal counsel, and, and senior cabinet members for working to craft the policy that you've presented around our board and team's desires. Thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Gallegos. Any further board comment or questions? If not, do we have a motion to approve?
I will make a motion, but I did want to ask one thing. It doesn't have to do with public comment, but are our pre-agenda meetings, I know they're usually scheduled on the second Monday, but do we ever change that? Have we, have we, can you think? I know there's some times that we have moved our meetings to Tuesday or the next week or so, but is, have we ever done that with a pre-agenda meeting?
I think occasionally we have a school holiday or something like that.
Okay. Well, let me, let me point out something then that maybe we need to amend it. Just on the first BE local, it says regular meetings, and it says pre-agenda meetings of the board shall be on the second Monday of each month, and regular meetings shall be on the third Monday of each month. But then there's this one sentence, it says, "When determined necessary and for the convenience of board members, the board president may change the date, time, and location of a regular meeting with proper notice." But I think that should say, change the location of a, I mean, the date, time, and location of a pre-agenda and slash or regular meeting with proper notice.
That's a good catch.
So, you can do both.
Yeah. That's a good catch, Mr. Parker. Yeah.
With that said, I move that, wherever it says right there, that we follow administration's recommendation that the board add, revise, or delete local policies as recommended and as indicated in our, in our packet by Tasby Policy Service and according to Instruction Sheet for Tasby Localized Policing Manual, Update one-one-four, with that one amendment that I just mentioned.
Thanks, Mr. Parker. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Dindell. So, we have a motion from Mr. Parker and a second from Mr. Dindell to consider Tasby Board Policy Update one-one-four with that, that one amendment to BE local. Are there questions or comments concerning our, our motion? Any public comment? If not, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Our next item, we worked on last week. We have a resolution for Region Fifteen Superintendent of the Year. I mentioned at our pre-agenda board workshop that I had the privilege of judging, voting for the Region Fifteen recipient of the Superintendent of the Year last year. And while those two gentlemen that were, were highly qualified, I felt like we needed to showcase our superintendent. And Ms. Hopkins gave me a letter this evening that she's worked on, and I think we're a little bit ahead of the process, so we're, we've got that ready. But tonight, we'll need to approve a resolution that allows us to do that. So, that is item twenty on our agenda. Do we have a motion to approve our resolution?
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution to nominate Dr. Carl Detloff as Tasby Superintendent of the Year.
So, we have a motion from Mr. Gallegos and a, and a second from Ms. Maazel Flint. Any other questions or comments concerning our motion? The resolution's real simple. It says, "San Angelo Independent School District Board of Trustees on this date, March twenty-third, twenty-twenty, resolve to nominate Dr. Carl Detloff Superintendent of Schools for exemplary, his exemplary and visionary leadership toward improving student performance in our schools." And we'll all need to sign that resolution. So, do we have any other board comments or questions concerning that? Any public comment? If not, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Hopefully, we'll see Dr. Detloff on the stage at a Tasby meeting, our Tasby TASSA joint convention in September.
Assuming we have convention.
That's right. Now, Max? We did talk a little bit about another meeting, a virtual meeting. What's the, what's everyone's desire on that?
Yes, sir. Mr. Lehman, members of the board, during, really, this unprecedented time of having a national, state, and global emergency crisis, we believe that if we would schedule our virtual meetings, which, again, from legal counsel and Texas Association of School Board recommendations, we have guidelines for following a virtual meeting platform, much like our, our students and teachers are doing. So, I would offer to the board, under your guidance, that we potentially schedule every Monday for the next month at least with a virtual meeting. And then certainly, we can postpone or cancel that meeting if we need it to. But I think providing it on the agenda provides us an opportunity to meet virtually. There's a couple of different platforms that many school districts or teams are utilizing to do that. So, we would want to help support that endeavor, but that is at your discretion if you think our board would like to schedule a weekly virtual meeting at least next month time period.
Well, we've delayed, canceled school till the tenth, right? So, that would be the thirteenth. So, maybe the third, thirtieth, which is next Monday, the sixth, and the thirteenth. That's three weeks. I don't know if we, do we need to do it for a month if we do it?
The thirteenth is theoretically pre-agenda.
Yeah, we have a meeting then anyway.
Would we, yes.
So, we wouldn't need a virtual meeting if we have a pre-agenda?
Yes, sir. I anticipate we would. Certainly, we'll gather information on a weekly basis. But I think, I don't know, this is, again, uncharted territory, but I'm guessing that is it our prerogative that we post a meeting, and then it is our choice to go virtual or have a physical meeting? I'm just...
I would think that'd be the case, as long as it's posted, you know, legally.
And certainly, we'll use guidelines from CDC, Governor Abbott, and just kind of play it by your weekly, but have the pre-agenda posted, but maybe it's scheduling these three additional virtual meetings up to that pre-agenda. That's, that's at your discretion.
Would Monday be the magic day, or do you have a different plan?
Do Mondays at five forty-five virtually work, work for everyone? Is everyone in a spot where they can make that work?
It's okay. Timing is that good?
I think that's okay with me. Question I have, and maybe in your discussions with DEA and Tasby and others, are, have there been discussions about whether we'll be able to continue or be able to have virtual meetings for our regular meetings or our pre-agenda workshops?
Yes, sir. Both. Yes, sir. Both, both are possibilities.
And I assume they'll find some way to work it out, but how do you have public comment at those?
There's a couple of ways to do that. What we understand through the, a platform that is utilized across the state, as well as in our academic work, is the Zoom platform. I understanding, my understanding from Zoom is that the dial-in feature works best for public comment. So, on the posting, we would have a dial-in feature for that public comment, but I might defer to someone that's, has a little more expertise in that area. Dr. Gomez, I think you're the ninth person in the room, Dr. Gomez, so you may enter.
That is correct. It would be specified in the posting how the public would be able to join the link for the meeting, and the procedures for public comment would be specifically outlined.
Yeah, that's assuming that this board member's smart enough to figure out how to get on it, you know? So, I had some trouble getting on it today, so.
You would not be the only one, Mr. Lehman.
So, I got on, but I couldn't see Farrah or anything, so. She couldn't hear me. I could, you know, so, other than that, it was fine. But if I, I told her if I'm going to lead a meeting on Zoom, then I, we may just let me be gone and let Max take care of it.
But we are prepared to help coach all of us at the closure of this meeting tonight.
That's good. I'll need some coaching. We do have one other item that we haven't covered, and that's, we're supposed to do the superintendent evaluation, contract, and salary. So, we're going to go into closed session and be back shortly following that discussion.
Yeah, that's good.
Let's, we're returning from our closed session. We went into closed session under Texas Government Code five-five-one-oh-seven-four. I'm supposed to announce that prior to us doing that, but that allows us to discuss personnel matters, which certainly applies to us considering the superintendent's evaluation, contract, and salary. And we are going to announce tonight that we're, the board wants to extend Dr. Detloff's contract by a year. He has a three-year contract, so we want to extend that another year, which is our, how we normally do that. That gives him confidence from our team, knowing that he can build a plan, and we're not going to pull the rug out from under him in the next year or two. So, that's, and then we also, our motion would be that we're going to extend his contract a year, and also that we're going to give him an increase in pay that's commensurate with those that are similar to that, that our other administrative, senior administrative team members get. And that covers our motion. Certainly, our board team is very satisfied, as it should be indicated by the fact that we are nominating, nominating him for Superintendent of the Year. We're very satisfied with his performance, and I think every indication, this week alone, the fact that we fed over six thousand students last, since school's been out, you know, he's led that initiative and a number of other initiatives for us from a curriculum standpoint and the things that we're doing to try to deliver education to all of our, all of our students, and pretty challenging for the type of socioeconomic conditions that exist in San Angelo. So, lots of great ideas from our administrative team, and I think, as our board team discussed, we've got a really fully engaged administrative team, and I think that's a clear credit to Carl and his leadership ability. So, we're really happy with, with what's going on in our district. We're, as a board team, certainly have high expectations for student performance. We know that our, our administrative team, our teachers, our bus drivers, you know, everybody's expecting our students to perform at the highest level, and we, as a board team, expect that, and we're proud of the steps we've taken this year. But we know those are just steps towards success, and we're looking forward to having leaps of success rather than just steps. So, I think that's, Carl's done a good job of leading us in that area, too. So, those are, there's several different criteria that we evaluate our superintendent on. One of them has to do with his relationship with us and the community. I think that it couldn't be any better as far as that is concerned, and the safety and well-being of our students, the fiscal, how sound are we fiscally? Those are things that we are included in Dr. Detloff's evaluation. And in nearly every case, we feel really happy with what we're doing there, and we're going to all work collectively to make sure that we continue to improve student performance. So, that's a long motion. My motion is that we increase, we add a year to Dr. Detloff's contract, and then we give him an increase in pay that's commensurate with that, that we will make a decision on later for similar administrat, senior administrative staff members. So, that's my motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Dindell. So, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any further board comments or questions, or if not, all in favor of our motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. And that concludes our meeting. So, hearing no objection, we'll stand adjourned.